Good evening. We're getting two three eight three in, council workshop. First items, public input. Citizens may address the council regarding any item of city business on tonight's agenda. Duration is three minutes. Does anybody wish to address the council at this point? Seeing none item two is general items. There are none. I decree his executive review.
Okay, the first one under executive review tonight is a discussion with Alan Pauls, the CEO of MMIA to talk to the council and call it tonight about continued shooting in Riverside Park.
Great, thanks for having me again. My name is Alan Pauls. I'm the chief executive officer of the Montana Municipal and Local Authority. Was asked to come down and talk about risk management issues, potential exposures, possible concerns with shooting in your city park. Before I get into that, I want to give you a little bit of an overview of who we are and what my role in this discussion is. The MMIA is a risk retention pool for cities and towns in the state of Montana. We're not an insurance company. We act similar to an insurance company. A lot of people say we look and smell like an insurance company, but we're not. And we're different in that we're owned and operated by our members. That's you folks. We operate four separate pools. We have a liability pool, we have a workers' compensation pool, property pool, and then a health insurance pool. Each of those pools or programs are operated separately from each other. We don't co-mingle funds across lines of coverage, so a city can participate in one of our pools and not the others, or they can participate in all four. I'm here to talk a little bit about liability exposure, and in particular relative to shooting ranges, either indoor or outdoor, and I believe you have both down in your park. I want to talk about coverage, because I'm not here to tell you what you can and can't do. That's not my role. We don't act like an insurance company. I'm not going to come here and say, hey, we're going to write you out if you continue with this practice or that practice. That's not what we do. We either cover exposure, so we don't. Some of what I'm going to talk about tonight is covered exposure, some of what I'm going to talk tonight about is not covered exposure. But we also, the way we rate risk, in that we don't specifically underwrite to the exposure, we use as a basis for underwriting your payroll, okay? We have found over the 30 years of our existence, your payroll is reflective of your exposure for your community. The larger the community, the bigger the payroll, the more exposure they have, the more miles of streets they have to maintain, sewers, sidewalks, water system, et cetera. So we establish base rates based on your payroll, but then we modify your rate based on your experience. Now, I'm giving you a lot of background to kind of lead into my discussion. Not going to tell you what you can and can't do, but I am here to talk about exposure, because I think as the city council, your job is to look out for the city's interests, your job is to make decisions, and part of that decision-making process you should factor in, what our exposure to liability risk may be. I often tell people when I do risk management presentations, you need to know what the exposure is. Sometimes the best risk management decision from your perspective is, okay, we accept the risk and we'll take it. And that may be the decision you make. Other times it may be, we'll transfer the risk, we'll send it off to somebody else, make somebody insure it, or we'll try to manage the risk. With regard to shooting ranges, there's really, as I see it, and there may be more, but there's three categories of risk that exists out there. There's risk to injury, either somebody using the range or somebody around the range. There's risk to disease, and that predominantly rests with your indoor facility, and there's risk to pollution exposure. The risk to injury, I'm not a lawyer. I've dealt with, we defend at any given time between 100 and 150 active lawsuits against our members. We're around those a lot. I see a lot of claims. I've seen claims argued relative to shooting ranges, that shooting is an ultra hazardous activity, and therefore it is strict liability. If something happens, you're at fault, okay? You don't have defense. I don't know how viable that theory is. Lawyers argue a lot of different theories when they're trying to prove their cases. But there is, there is risk to injury. I mean, that, it happens. I had a claim, we handled a claim 10 years ago involving a shooting range in one of our larger communities that was not owned by the city, but it was being used by the city police department. These people are people that we pay and train to handle firearms, to go out and carry those firearms and know when and how to use those firearms. An officer was on the range qualifying, went to draw his service revolver from the holster, shoved himself in the leg. He was acting in the course and scope of his job duties, so he had no claim against his employer, the city, other than a workers' compensation claim. His only remedy against his employer was work comp. But because it was a county range, the city was using the range, he did file a tort claim against the county, and the argument was, shooting is an ultra hazardous activity, you have the responsibility as a range owner to manage, supervise, oversee that range. You failed to do that, that's how I got injured, therefore you owe me money. We were not involved in that aspect of the claim, but I do know in that particular instance, the county did settle his claim. They paid him $110,000 for his injuries. Some may say, well, that's ridiculous. That's our system sometimes. That's how things go. So there is that risk of somebody being injured as the owner of that range, whether somebody else is managing it, whether they're supposed to be overseen or not, I don't think that risk goes away for you, as the owner of the range. The other, and probably, and I should have started with this, the more concerning exposure to me, as a risk manager, is with the indoor range. That is a situation where you know you have lead contamination in that building, there's inadequate, if any, ventilation system. That is only going to continue to get worse, and that is an exposure to anybody that's in there. And that's a real exposure. I don't know what you do about that, short of totally reclaiming that building and putting in some type of ventilation system to continue to use it. We are right now in the process, as I stand here, dealing with a handful, and I mean two handfuls or more, work comp claims in a large community where they have an indoor shooting range and hit for their police department, where the claim is that the ventilation system was not adequate in that range. One officer happened to go to the county health department and had his lead levels tested. They were high. We've had, I think, between 10 and 15 additional officers that have gone down to be tested. They've all filed exposure claims for workers' compensation. It may or may not be proven that the high exposure levels in their bloodstream came from the range, but that's something we're going to have to pay a lot of money to try to disprove, because we do know that there are lead contaminants within that range. So that is an exposure. I don't know how to manage that exposure, or how you would reasonably manage that exposure, again, short of wiping the slate clean, doing a total reclaim of the building, and putting in a adequate ventilation system, and then continuing to maintain and clean, et cetera. But I do have concerns about continuing to allow use of that facility until something would be done. The last exposure, again, is just overall general pollution. With shooting, you're, especially the outdoor range, you're shooting in a concentrated area. Those shots fall down to the ground, they build up over time, and that is a potential long-term exposure. That exists whether you do anything or not. I mean, you've got that exposure, it will grow over time. So from a coverage standpoint, I just want to, I want to be very clear. We have no exclusions in our memorandum for shooting activities, okay? So if you had a claim out there involving somebody being injured as a result of a shooting activity, there would be no exclusion. We wouldn't provide coverage for that claim. Depending upon the circumstances, we would either defend or try to settle that claim, and then that would be reflected in the city's loss history. We don't rate you higher for that, we're not going to charge you more for having that exposure. However, if you do have claims, that will come back to reflect in your experience modification. So as you have claims, we look at a five-year lookback, those claims drive future premiums based on that experience. So that, that would be a covered exposure. The potential exposure, exposure, if you will, the disease exposure of using a building that's contaminated with lead, or the pollution exposure to the land itself, may or may not be covered. We have an absolute pollution exclusion in our memorandum of liability coverage. It says basically, we will not cover any liability arising out of pollution. So if arguably somebody was exposed to lead in a contaminated, polluted building, they filed a claim as a result of that exposure, there may, that may trigger that exclusion. It would depend on what else was pled, but that may trigger that exclusion. If somebody filed some type of a claim for pollution to land, I don't know how that would come about. I never say never when it comes to claims, though. As soon as I see a new one, I see a new one. That would not be covered by our memorandum. So those are, those are kind of how the coverages would work for that type of, those types of exposures. Lastly, you know, there's, just talking with the city staff, and Sam could probably address this as well or better than me, but as far as, how do you manage the exposure, or can you manage the exposure? Can you manage the exposure by leasing the property to someone else? Can you manage the exposure by donating, giving away, selling the property to somebody else? I think to some extent you can with the injury exposure. I think if you don't own the property and somebody else does, that particular exposure may go away when it comes to somebody being injured on the range itself. What doesn't go away is, that range sits in a park area, so if somebody happens to be somewhere where they shouldn't be and gets injured, that can always come back to rest on your doorstep as the park owner and not taking precautions to keep the public in general from, out of harm's way. With regard to the pollution exposures, I don't know that you can transfer that away. I think those are legacy exposures that you own, they stay with you. I'm not an expert when it comes to circle of law and those types of things, because quite honestly, we don't cover those types of things. But I have been involved in a peripheral matter in a couple of those claims, and it seems to me that anybody's hands that ever touched that property is going to get drugged in. So I don't know that that gets rid of those particular exposures. So that is kind of my overview. Again, it's more informational. I've been down here before, we've talked about this, this particular piece of property historically, and I want to be clear, I am not anti-shooting range. I mean, I think, we live in a state where we hunt, we fish, I think we need shooting ranges. But I have dealt with claims, I know that there's exposure and there's risk, and I think as the decision-makers, public policymakers of the town, I think those are things that you all should be considering as you make decisions on what to do or not to do with that shooting range. With that, if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Pauls, Council Vice President Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, I don't know exactly why we're having this discussion. I know, I shouldn't say it's don't know about the indoor shooting range and what's really going on there, whether or not we're actively, actively shooting in that or not because of flooding, if that was something that's occupied or not. I know the outdoor shooting turns this month, next year, in the lease, so I mean, that's, that's done in a year. And I guess, and that's why I don't know why we're having this discussion, is this for the indoor, or because they're shooting in the indoor, or?
Well, that's probably the most important, I think, at this point, but as far as shooting indoors, what, what can we do there, short of stopping that?
Mayor, it's my understanding that that indoor range has been tested, and that those tests have come back that it's got lead contamination. And it's also my understanding that that indoor range does not have adequate ventilation system for indoor fire prevention. Those are my understandings. I've not been in there, but that's my understanding. That being said, I mean, if you were to ask me for a recommendation, as somebody who can drive into town and stand before you and give a recommendation, and then get in my car and drive out of town and I have to wrestle this, I would not allow the public to access that indoor range until you do something to deal with the current conditions. And I say that from just my experience, and really what's driving that experience most recently is this claim that we're dealing with in one of our large communities, which is a controlled indoor range, limited use for the police department only, they have an ventilation system, they have not adequately and properly maintained, managed, and cleaned that range, and they do have a high lead content in that range. Right now, we have shut the range, or they have shut the range down, we haven't, but they have shut it down, and they're looking for solutions. Given that, from my perspective, if you've got a known contaminated site without adequate ventilation, to me, until you deal with that, I would be remiss to say you should do anything other than shut it down. And I know that's easy to say, and I know that may create more difficulties for you, but, but it is a real risk.
Okay, sure, I have an ask, question. I brought the rod and gun, at least with me when I saw this, but I did not bring the rifle cord. We have the rifle cord lease and is that a current lease, and what's the expiration date on that period, honestly?
Senator's going to read.
But I guess, that's, I don't know, to me, it seems like that's a question more directed to that particular building and that, that lease, unless by the time the council looks at it, even consider a resolution to, to...
If I remember properly, I believe the lease has expired, because the lease was not renewed since the flooding event of 2011, because the building has fallen under disrepair.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but I didn't want to speak out of turn, not knowing, because if there is no lease, then there is no activity.
Well, that is, that is not true. The court still uses the building, so to stop use of the building, the city would need to block the door.
And I thought we discussed no lease, no activity before, as a body, did we not?
I think we have, and I think we've been told at different times the building was not in use, but our citizens have never respected that, and it has remained in use.
We have asked it to not be in use, but unless you, unless that's directed to block the door, we really have no authority to do that. So unless, unless we're directed to go and block, barricade that door closed, we can't just act on our own.
But help me out here, Mr. Mayor, if I may. That's not a directive that would have to come from the council, that's a directive that can be made on the administrative level, correct?
That is true, and that may be something that we need to look at the next council meeting. Until we get a handle on it, or get some more information on what we're dealing with. And I think we've got a lot of that now, at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would have one other question, I think, would be to ask our city legal counsel, his thoughts on the matter, and I realize we've brought Alan here to discuss this with us, so why, you know, is it that we're having a problem with a building that's being used and shouldn't be used, because we have one year left on our shooting on the lease, and should we consider a resolution, or to terminate that lease now, early? I guess that's, what would be the opinion of the city's legal counsel?
Well, that's a multiple level question. I'll do my best to answer what I can. I don't know why it's on the council agenda. I think it just came up. There's been ongoing discussions for a long time about this shooting down at the park, and the fact that it's any city park has been the problem. Everybody's wrecking that stuff. And I think this council, or the former council, had made a decision that it was going to sunset, shooting was going to stop in the park, and then the intervening flood created another urgency. And the urgency is, the water basically contaminated the building, flooded the building, made the bathrooms inoperable. There was, I guess, when it was dried out, the club went in and there was more shooting, the city went in and did some tests. The tests came back and there's lead, there's lead contamination, can't say anything other than that. And the club, during this time period, has been attempting to come up with an idea as to how they can take over the shooting operation down there altogether. And I attended a park board meeting, and there was discussion as to would it work to give or lease the buildings, the park, to the club? And the answer is yes. If you, I said, if you would de-annex that property, convey it all to this club, give them the whole problem, give them the park, give them everything, it's not city property anymore. That's the only way you're going to minimize the risk Alan's talking about, personal injury type risk and injury. You're not going to get rid of the pollution problem. That's yours. As a city, you own that. It's like the dump, the old dump down there. You can't get rid of it. It is what it is. And that is the only discussion we have. Now, the problem is, we come back to, well, they're still shooting, what do we do? And we have in our possession studies that say they're lead poisoning. Well, the city owns the building, if you're allowing people to shoot in it, you've got problems, you've got liability issues. And I guess the discussion to have your insurer come down is to point out the fact that you have exposure, and that exposure may not be covered. What are the ramifications of that? Well, if you had a substantial judgment obtained against the city, who pays it? Well, the city pays it. The citizens all pay it. A levy comes about, the funds are paid for the damage, and that, you know, that's where we're coming from, I guess, is that the council, as the managers of the city, have to realize that you're sitting on potential liability down there. And there has to be a determination that your insurer, or MMIA's talking about, the determination is, do you want to continue with the risk or not? And that, that really is the million dollar question. It's, how do you want to proceed?
If I may, I would defer from Sam's answer and from Alan's statement earlier, perhaps what we're being told or asked in the way, that perhaps the best remedy is to have that building go away for period, as in demolish, burn, haul off in a manner according with the contaminant that it has. Is that correct?
That would certainly resolve your problem, but again, you said the magic word, you have to dispose of that property. And I'm not qualified to tell you how to do that, I'm sure somebody...
And it's probably not cheap, that's probably the least expensive option.
Now, if the club walked up tomorrow with a substantial chunk of money and bought that park from the city, I would have a hard time saying that doesn't resolve your injury case or issues, but only if you de-annex it, made it not part of the city anymore. The biggest problem here is you're on city property, and regardless of what happens down there, you're always going to be a defendant. The city is always going to be a defendant, no matter what happens. If there's some connection to the city, you're going to make the complaint. It's just the way plaintiffs and attorneys work. You sue everybody, and you sue the ones you think have a big pocket.
If you want to just make the complaint, you'll be the primary target.
They always presume, the cities have unlimited resources, and you don't, especially under your coverage. If they're being frank with you, that you have some potential uncovered liability.
And not, not just, and I could tell claim stories all day long, but I think to drill that home, and it's a different context, but it really is a pollution exposure. It's a recent claim we dealt with, it was in another community where we had, we felt no coverage, we had a coverage dispute with the city. It ultimately resolved itself for $7.5 million. We paid, because of the coverage dispute, we paid a portion of that, but a big portion of that fell to the city. The one thing I do know about pollution type of claims is, is they get very, very, very expensive. With that $7.5 million, in addition to that, there was $3 million, $3.5 million in defense costs, because they line up their experts, we line up our experts, it becomes an expert swearing match, and when it comes to those types of experts, they're very expensive. And the $3.5 million that we spent in defense costs didn't get us even to depositions. I mean, that was just the initial engineering work behind the scenes. I am quite confident, and that's part of why we agreed to participate in the settlement, had we defended that, and we were defending it under reservation rights through a trial, it might have cost us twice as much as what we got. So they can get very ugly, they can get very expensive. Again, I'm not, not revealing anything that doesn't exist, you already have the exposure, you can manage that. The one thing I would say is, from a decision standpoint, the exposure exists today as it exists. It gets worse as time goes on, right? As you continue to add to that exposure, it does get worse. And the other thing, the priority from my perspective is, a known contamination site, I think it's, just from a, from a public safety standpoint, it's probably incumbent upon the city to take some action to eliminate the public from access to that contamination site. I'm not a scientist, I don't know how much, how many episodes it takes, but if somebody who's used that site comes down with lead poisoning, I can promise you, you'll be one of the first on the list to make the call.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, we'll, thank you very much, Alan.
Okay, the next one is, the engagement letter has, has been signed. This was a really short turnaround on this, so I signed it in haste for the city, and then now we're coming and asking for the council to move forward with this. It was to create, it's to create the special improvement district number 118 down on South Washington, next to Southeast Fourth. It's the same door statement that we've used for every, on council, for every S I D that we have done, and the community has, for as long as, in the foreseeable future. We just needed it done quickly, so I'm coming to you on the other end of it, asking for you to approve of it. Okay, and then the next one, obviously falls in line with this. This is the resolution to create the special improvement district number 118. 118 is the improvement district on South Washington. A portion of this project will be paid for with TIP district funds, and then, or I guess all of the project pretty much, and then the owners will pay a portion down there as well. The project is reaching its 60-day or more date, so we're trying to... The project is reaching its sixty day or award date, so we're trying to move this along pretty quickly. We have had no objection from the property owners on South Washington at this time and plan to move this project forward as quickly as possible.
Yes, Madam?
Okay, the next one also goes with the special improvement district is the resolution to award the bid for South Washington and Southeast Fourth, the street project. The project on Southeast Fourth is down by the ninety degree corner at Walmart. The road will be widened so that it is the same width the whole way, so that when you make the corner, if you were going west, coming from Walmart to on Southeast Fourth, when you make that corner, it does not line up with the rest of Southeast Fourth, so you're going around a very treacherous corner and then you're having to swerve back to the north to stay in line with Southeast Fourth. This will fix that, so the whole road will be the same width all the way around the corner, so lessening that, that quarter's angle and then making the road wider. The first part of that schedule is a hundred and twenty-four thousand sixty-six dollars for creation of the S I D. And schedules two and three are a hundred and one thousand and three, or thirty-four thousand four oh five. There are no street maintenance dollars that will be contributing to this project. It will be paid with TIP dollars. They were in total support of this project and happy to move it forward once the project is completed. And there is a very short window of time for this to be completed. Painting on Southeast Fourth will be done as well, because the paint has worn out from last summer and you cannot say that you're ready at this time.
Councilmember Dickerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I understand correctly, then that's Schedule One is awarded to C M G. Upon completion of that, and does that go up for another bid bid, or did they get the next two schedules automatically?
C M G was the low bid of the whole project, all three schedules. So their total amount of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars was the low bid for all three schedules.
But it's not going to be awarded until Schedule One is completed?
No, you're awarding.
As I understand it, Councilmember Dickerson, the Schedule Two and Three are contingent on the approval of the creation of the S I D. If the S I D were to fail, Schedule Two and Three would not proceed and Schedule One would.
Okay.
Correct. But they are all going to C M G?
Correct. They were all advertised as a package?
Yes.
Councilmember President Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Schedule One, Two, and Three are, these are all a part of the, all being paid for with TIP district funds, is that correct? And the, I haven't had a chance to look through all the check and read it in its entirety, but can you tell me, are there sidewalks included in this? And is there any crossings included?
Yes, there, there are sidewalks on the north side of, the north, the north side of Southeast Fourth up to Washington. And then we will force all of the foot traffic with another crosswalk that is, is lit across the street. So the sidewalk on South Washington was what we will ask, or will force pedestrian traffic to use to continue around onto Bernhardt to get to Walmart. There's, there are two ditches on Southeast Fourth side that we, because we're going to cover, and so foot traffic can stay on the south, but there will be a crossing for it.
And can you tell me, I don't know, I'm sure the engineers have looked at that, will this allow for semi-truck traffic and, and as much as easy to allow for one, will this allow for two trucks to navigate that corner at the same time? Would it be wide enough for that to run?
You know, I'm actually going to defer that question to Brandon Duffy from Great West Engineering. He, he can tell you all about what the street width and the turning readings for sixty.
I'll tell you. I do have the plans, if you want to see what she's talking about. I'm going to look at. Is that I handled that, Heidi? All right, yeah, so sheet, let's see here. Sheet six, you can see the plan, we've gotten that out. And that one ran with some turning software to show that the design truck, it's like a fifty-seven foot semi, can make that turn without approaching into oncoming traffic. So you'll notice we have the stripes such that they can come out into what would be the center turn lane as you get further west. So they'll come out and they, they'll have enough room to make that turn without approaching in. The turning moments do show traffic going west to east and turning up onto Bernhardt Road. Their trailers do approach across that center turn lane, but without, you know, extremely modifying that corner, there's no way to get around that. The intent of this project was just to widen out to a normal, there's room and keep the southbound traffic in their own lane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other questions?
The next item is a reservation for a zoning grant from L M C seventeen twenty-ten. List of uses in highway commercial zoning for medical marijuana dispensary or dispensary. The public hearing will be next week, June sixth, two thousand seventeen. I was not at the planning board meeting, but I do believe there's a representative for the applicant for this here tonight. So I can briefly talk to you about what I do know, that this went to the planning board and was recommended unanimously to be approved and recommended to the council. The planning board minutes are attached. And then the question about off-street parking is also attached. I do believe there's a question as to where traffic would park. So to alleviate that concern, our planner, who is ill today and not able to come, has attached the parking requirements that they should be able to meet. And then I will turn this over to the applicant's representative so that you can ask him any questions that you may have or discuss anything further.
Hi, my name's Jason Smith. I'm co-owner of Montana Advanced Care Givers out of Billings, Montana. And I, I'm showing up here today because, like Heidi stated, we kind of met the requirements put forth by the city. The variance we're asking for is that fifteen-hundred square foot variance, basically to help facilitate patients in this area. It would not be for producing or growing any sort of medication or marijuana to be for. The storefront, basically, for the patients to be able to access it. Everything would be done into a package that's sealed. There would be no loose anything. Everything has a warning label contained on it. It's the first one, or the first in the state to actually put in or something like that. I don't know if you have any questions about the way the operations rammed it.
Yeah, any questions from the council? Councilmember Hurd?
I have several I'd like to ask. First off, you're at Maggie Lane in Billings.
Correct.
Where is Maggie Lane?
Maggie Lane is next, if you're familiar with the City of Billings Operations Center in Billings. If you go over south, Billings Boulevard, pass Hanser's Autobody, and you're heading towards the river. When you cross over I ninety, that's Midland Road. And the City of Billings Operations Center is there in the motor pool where the, at the end of their parking lot, it's a little off-street called Maggie Lane, right across from Kenworth Motor Park.
Yeah, it's on the west and west side of Billings. In essence, west side?
No, I'm going to say more of the south side, where kitty corner kind of from where Cabela's would be, across the, the, there.
Okay, okay. So Cabela's or the south Billings Boulevard.
That's our closest.
Exchange.
Exactly.
Is your closest.
Yes.
You're, you are requesting zone change because it's not light industrial zoning?
Correct.
And the planning board recommended allowing medical marijuana back in two thousand eleven only in light industrial zoning. So I assume that that's why we're into the request for a zone change?
Correct. At that, at that time, when the city addressed that, the properties that are owned that are zoned out would be like Montana Welding, I believe, fiberglass structures, the refineries, and because of that, and being federally regulated with some of what theirs are, their position is, they couldn't allow that on their property. And this property was, I believe, zoned out way beforehand during that time and, or time period, and it would just start to be the easiest way to go about it on that.
Okay. Next question is, you stated, and I have the, the, the letter from the county planning board, that you currently serve three-hundred-and-fifty patients approximately?
Yes.
In the state?
Correct.
And that you think there are about twenty patients in Laurel that would make use of?
Just in the Laurel area, just within the town, outside of city limits and, let's say Red Lodge, Abzorkey, and all those areas that would bring those people probably closer to this area. I mean, they're not going to run into Billings if they don't have to when it's winter, the roads are. But yes, we have twenty or so here.
Okay. Then a question, I guess I have. First off, those hundred-and-fifty that would come in only have to drive ten more miles to get to you in Billings. I mean, that's a short distance, even in the wintertime. And twenty patients in the city of Laurel, I have worked in some businesses and run some businesses, and I know that if I have a business, I have to have more than twenty people a month to make my business pay. Does this, I mean, I can't see how twenty patients can make it viable for a business to be established in an area that you're asking, because they're not expenses not small. And does twenty patients pay for that room? I mean, it's just a question I have to do.
Well, I guess we would find out, I'm trying to figure out where you're going. I guess if you want to know if I'm going to go in there and try to make a killing and a big profit or any of that, I don't think so, but I do believe.
This isn't, this does not have to do with the application that they're offering.
Okay, okay.
Here, your application is for the, for the variance.
I do.
Any other questions for Lady Capicano? Council Vice President Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I knew it one time, now I don't remember. What is the current zoning for the property at two oh four South Washington?
It's highway commercial.
Highway commercial.
Correct.
And access to the range of, or?
Light industrial.
Any other questions?
I have a question I had to state, and I guess, and I realize we're a little out of line, with some personal issues and some others with some council members, but, you know, it's just a statement that I'd like to make, that it's always tough when you look at variances. What happens is you have a zone, that you've zoned for a reason to be specific, for a specific use, but you end up doing, you have variances, you start mucking holes in that, you start, it starts looking like a slice of Swiss cheese where you lost that continuity. And I would always, I always think that the council was, was out of the mind that they should, to make a variance and maybe, you know, the council ought to look at changing the zoning here, instead of putting holes in the, you know, a zoning for a particular area that you've already set by ordinance. And that's really the question to be whether or not, I think, if that's the attitude that the council wanted to take, is to pursue something like that, is to look at them, look at the zoning itself and see if that shouldn't be changed entirely.
We do have to take the application as it stands.
I do, I realize that.
Okay, okay.
I'm just making a statement.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dickerson?
I think on this, what you're doing, you're doing, you're just changing the variance to allow a different type of business to come in. And that's going to open up the avenue for other businesses to come in. But the city is not going to lose control of the type of businesses that come in because of the variance change. It's just allowing a larger possible clientele to come in with different businesses that can't now because of the way it's stated, it's zoned. So I, I mean, things are going to come anyway, and we'll always want to involve the things that come into the city and keep control over those. So this variance is not going to lose the city's control. It's just going to change the possibility of different things, maybe you'll come into an area that you can't come in now.
Right, and you do have, and you do have criteria in which a variance can be, can be allowed or should be permitted, which are listed on the front page of your resolution and were answered by the applicant as well as discussed by the planning board. So you, you do have three times where the applicant has addressed the criteria and then has, has answered it to the best of their ability. And that's, and that's really where your decision comes from, is whether they have met those, those four titles.
In continuation of that, as Councilman Hurd said, you know, you've got that type of business ten miles down the road. But yes, we, we want to be user-friendly to our citizens of Laurel. There may be more medical situations in Laurel that we're not familiar with, but this could open up new avenues for them. So I think we need to look, we need to look at that also, you know, thinking about this, this variance that we look for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? How about the applicants?
I'd like to speak on that. One thing that we do offer also at our facilities required by this company, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with Charlotte's Web, but it's a product made strictly from hemp that is not psychoactive. It's not marijuana, but it's made out of Colorado. It was used to help alleviate, let's say, like a little girl that was known for seizures and so forth. They offer oils and tinctures, but it's got a lot of the properties that marijuana has in it without the high effect. And the requirement, we're an exclusive dealer for them, that they require a brick and mortar facility. And that is one of the other things that we will be offering. We have a lot of patients that do not have cards, that have nothing to do with marijuana, that have to access this somewhere also. So that might be one of the things you're, you're talking about.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the final thing under executive review tonight is a resolution for our contract with Nixle for reverse nine-one-one services. The city currently contracts with a company, excuse me, a company called Code Red for our reverse nine-one-one. And Code Red has just become too cumbersome to operate and the yearly fee has continued to go up on it. And our police chief did some investigation and found that has continued to go up on it and our police chief did some investigation and found that through different test runs with his dispatchers that he would like to move the city's reverse marijuana services over to a company called Nixle, which works well with our Zerger software. Has, as you can see, he included a different summary, contract summary information along in with the agenda, or, excuse me, with the resolution. Reverse 911 is an awesome service. I wish that more citizens would sign up for it. We did have a bit of difficulty with Code Red on our website. The tab for it said Code Red instead of reverse 911, so people didn't know what Code Red meant. And so I think that prohibited some people from signing up or that they felt that it was too invasive. Certainly not, it's a wonderful public service that the city can use for all sorts of disasters, emergencies, fires. We did use the reverse 911 service when we had an active shooting situation in the city about a month ago and asked all residents to stay inside and that was, I think, a wonderful use, making sure that everyone stayed safe in that situation.
Any questions from the council?
I have a question, I've definitely heard the last comment, so where did that call go?
It was, so the active shooting situation was above the roadrunner and it's the reverse 911 for the neighbors and asked them to stay inside while the police were continuing...
Just in that neighborhood?
Yes, just in that neighborhood.
Any questions, council? Updating on 2011, they're almost over the river flooding again?
We're getting close to the end of this one. Woo! The intake is online and we are currently using water from the new intake down at the intake building, from the treatment plant building, so that's incredibly exciting. There was a walkthrough that was done on Friday last week. I went up there and met, after the walkthrough, when the construction company was completed, I went up and met with the property owner, Mr. Harkins, that we had leased property with and then purchased some property to put the control building on, walked the mile and a half with him, talked about any restoration concerns that he had, any, he had his concerns about some couple of trees that I will look into our contract with. We just want to make sure that we are good neighbors for the people that were so proud of us, that helped us really move this project forward. So I wanted to thank him for being a good neighbor for the city now and indefinitely in the future, obviously, since we have that building and intake as his neighbor. I talked to the public works director and I believe the mayor went on the ride along with the ride through and it seems like the punch list isn't too long, that the contractor has done a real good job with restoration and that we should be closing this project out and submitting our last straw here timely. And so I'm super excited about that and can hopefully take this off the, off the agenda at some point and we can all breathe a little easier knowing that when the heat of summer hits that we will have water.
Questions from the council? I would just say that there was a period of time when the public works director was able to get us out there and look at that project as we went along and if you remember what it looked like at any one point, it might be a benefit to take you back out and see what the restoration looks like. It's amazing that they've done such a nice job and there's very few punch list items to fix and I think they're ready to even plant some seed and get it back to the property owner to wait. Much better than the way we found it, I'm sure. Councilmember Dickerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is that possible, that we might maybe set something up prior to our next workshop where we can get the group to go over again and not all of us are available during the day to be able to view what's been done and the accomplishments? It'd be nice if we could, you know, maybe do that prior to a workshop meeting in the near future.
We'll work on it and get emails to you on the outcome and the times and dates and make sure that everybody can make the calls.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have four other items. If there's none under form, I have five is review of the draft council agenda for June 6th. I know we have a few folks gone tonight, that's unfortunate, as everyone that's here plans on being here on the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to point out prior to possibly beginning, the Hart Board meeting scheduled for Thursday at 5:30 has been canceled for this week.
Did everybody get that email?
I think it was sent out.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Another announcement. Councilman McGee, let's start to...
I don't have anything, thank you.
Councilmember Dickerson?
I've got too soon, I'm sorry, that's all I have.
Council President Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see the draft agenda for next Tuesday's city council meeting shows that the cemetery commission is scheduled for June 13th and cemetery commission will have a meeting on June 13th. We managed to get our cemetery controllers mounted in a, you know, a water-resistant box at the cemetery and very easily showed us the cemetery sections for now, save actual markers, which we're working on to actually delineate those sections visually as you're walking through, but they're up and hopefully some people have found good use for those. We were happy to see that that was accomplished. Second of all, I have the entire city council had brought forward a retirement card and a gift to our council secretary. We appreciate your hard work and keeping us straight all these years. You know, it's not easy. Sometimes it's like herding cats and unfortunately she weathered, she did suffer weathering all that, so thank you very much on behalf of the council.
I understand her replacement is doing well and we're happy to have her aboard. Everybody happy that Heidi had hope?
We're just messing with you, it's working.
And from the staff, I'm sure we know our sentiments for 72 for all the years you've put in, 19, almost 20, that's a lot of taking...